Good evening. At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly, Chairwoman. Commissioner Baker.
President.
Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Present.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Here.
And Chairwoman Palmary Mouded.
Here.
Chair, let the record reflect you have nine Commissioners present for this evening's Agenda Setting Session.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her charity, to give the entire family of nations to agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his Spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think that's too long today.
I know. I'm not messing with it. I had to move myself back up.
Clerk of the Board, please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey Statute Sanitated Title X, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union, has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Tonight, we have two presentations that we would like to start our meeting with. Our first presentation is a resolution to Resolve Community Counseling Center, Inc., who has been an invaluable asset to our community since its establishment in 1974. Dedicated to providing quality and affordable counseling, advocacy, and educational programs, Resolve serves individuals of all ages, from children to adults, and offers support to couples and families. Their highly accredited staff of professionals, including psychologists, licensed counselors, therapists, and social workers, addresses a broad spectrum of concerns with compassion and expertise. Resolve's collaboration with local organizations, schools, and human resources departments demonstrates their commitment to community well-being. As we commend them for their outstanding service, we also acknowledge their milestone of 50 years as a pillar in mental health care. In recognition of their invaluable contributions, we proclaim May as Resolve Community Counseling Center, Inc. Month. Please join me in welcoming, and we're going to go up front now, James Meyer, the President of Resolve Community Counseling Center, as well as the Executive Director, Dr. Lydia Abrams, and LaVesta Virgil, Board Member, who are here to accept the resolution. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Mirabella to join me up front.
So I want to just thank my friends from Resolve House in Scotch Plains. In fact, last night Mayor Lizardo and the Township Council there honored the same group for the same great work that they've been doing. And it's very fitting that there's, we're in the middle of Mental Health Awareness Month, and Resolve does such a wonderful job in Scotch Plains and the surrounding community, taking care of people who need help. Mental health is not anything to be underestimated. People should seek help if they need it, and Resolve and many other places around our county offer that kind of help. But in this case, we're honoring Resolve House for 50 years of service, and I couldn't be more proud of the work that they do in the community and in the county. So, thank you. Lydia, do you want to say something?
I just, this has never happened to us before. We are really honored, and we are doing our best to serve the community in any way we can, and we're going to continue to do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to send my thanks to the County Commissioners of Board for this honor. The last few years, the number of hours we provided has tripled, and, you know, the need continues to rise, both in in-person and teletherapy.
Just thank you very much. And like Lydia said, we'll continue to do the work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chair Rebecca, Commissioner Rebecca Williams, to say a few words regarding the 2024 Infrastructure Grants.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the Board will be making a presentation for the 2024 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Award Program recipients. I'm happy to announce that this year's program, as you see, dedicated $1.5 million in matching funds to provide assistance to municipalities throughout Union County that will stimulate the development of public projects of economic, social, transportation, and governmental importance. So, in a second, you will view a compilation of videos submitted by each town discussing what the grant money they received will do for their, for their town. So, congratulates to, congratulations to all recipients, and thank you all.
Thank you, Fiscal Chair Williams.
Certainly.
Now, if everyone would like to turn their attention to one of the screens to watch the presentation.
Mayor Devaney, so glad you're here. We have so many infrastructure and road projects to do this year, and as usual, not enough money. What are we going to do?
Oh, that is a good news. Union County just gave us a check for $16,000 for drainage and for some improvements on Martin Lane.
Yes, that's great, because Martin's Lane is the best, and we need to fix the drainage system. I'm just paying because that money will go such a long way.
Absolutely.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Union County.
Hi, Mayor Salbonacorzo from Clark Township. I'd like to thank the Union County Board of Commissioners for their generous donation in the 2024 Infrastructure Grant. We, the Township of Clark, thank you. Myself, the Township Council, of course, the tax-paying citizens, Mark and Amy. Thank you.
This is Mayor Andrews over at Fairview, Jersey. Want to take a moment to thank Union County and the Union County Commissioners for all their support for our town. In particular, we greatly appreciate this municipality infrastructure grant. This is going to be used to help us update our critical infrastructure and make our roads safer in town. We're doing a massive project. This would not be possible if Union County's sports are very appreciative of it. Turn it over to my colleague, Public Safety Commissioner Bogala.
Yes, again, it just goes to our commitment to improving our streets in Panther, giving things safe for all residents. So, appreciate all the help that you get from the county on this effort. Thank you very much.
This is Mayor Chris Allwes. Our municipality appreciates the continued efforts of the Union County Board of Commissioners, providing this availability of funding. It increases opportunities and access to resources while enhancing the quality of life within our city. This 2024 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant, we will improve the Lynch Memorial Playground located on Fairmont Avenue. It increases safety, elevates an outdoor recreational space, and improves the quality of life for all Elizabethans. This new ADA-compliant playground equipment with a new water spray pot, a rubber plate surfacing, and this project will be completed in the summer of 2024. We're grateful to partner with the County of Union and the Board of Commissioners on this exciting initiative. I'd like to vise all of you to the grand opening. Thank you. Enjoy the evening.
Good morning. I'm Trisha Walsh on the Fanwood Council. This is Councilwoman Kathy Mitchell, along with Aaron McElroy Barker and Clint Dixon, our Public Works Director. We are here at Clean Communities Day, and Kathy would like to thank Union County. Yes, as Trish said, we are here to thank Union County Commissioners for including the Borough of Fanwood in the 2024 Infrastructure and Municipal Grant Aid Project. This $40,000 will help the borough complete much-needed roadwork. In conjunction with the New Jersey DOT Grant, we've been able to pave Panda Court, Robert, Robin Road, and Second Street to maintain the quality of life, as well as safe roads, for the residents of this community. It is this kind of support we look to Union County for, and for much appreciate being included, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Mayor Jen Blumensdorf from Garwood, and I just wanted to thank the Union County Commissioners for our infrastructure grant. We will be redoing all of the flooring in Borough Hall using this grant, including the carpeting here in our council chambers, all of the flooring in our administrative offices, and much-needed redo of the police department as well, all of their flooring in their department offices, as well as in their locker room and bathroom, all of the tiling in there. So, thank you so much. Borough Hall is in really great need of a rehab, and this grant will certainly help us out. Thank you.
Hi, Union County Commissioners. This is Dahlia Bertrines from the Township of Hillside. Mayor, I'm so appreciative of the $18,450 you have afforded our township, because we are going to enhance our infrastructure, making sure that we enhance safety for all our municipal buildings with your support and continued support. Thank you so much, and continue to have a great year.
Hi, this is Lyndon Karlovich with the Borough of Kenneworth, and I'm here to show you what we're planning to do with the municipal infrastructure grant. If you come with me, our roof has been leaking in several places, including in my office here. You can see the bucket here. We desperately need a new roof, and there's lots of repairs that we need to do outside. And if you come with me, I'll show you. These doors are broken and need to be replaced. As you can see, the cracking in the cement on the floor, the ground here. Also underneath this mat, there's some holes in the cement. And you can also see, if you see the stairs, are desperately in need of repair. They're breaking and falling apart. So, thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your consideration, and we desperately could use this grant money. Thank you.
Hi, this is Mayor Derek Armstead from the City of Lyndon. We'd like to thank the Union County Board of Commissioners for their $95,000 infrastructure grant. It'll go towards various projects in our town, and of course, when we receive grants, that allows us to keep our taxes down. Once again, we'd like to thank you for all your, all your support.
Okay, on behalf of myself and the Borough of Mountainside, I want to thank the Union County Commissioners for the grant from the 2024 Infrastructure Grant Program for $40,000. The money is going to be used to resurface Bayberry Lane and also to resurface Greenbrier Court. Those roads are in desperate need of repaving. I want to thank the Commissioners and the county for the monies that they give us for improving our infrastructure. It's going to, it's going to really be needed in Mountainside. So, thank you very much.
On behalf of all the residents of New Providence, I want to thank the Union County Board of Commissioners for giving us this generous check of $50,000. We're going to use it this year for paving. Over the last 19 years, you have worked with us, and we've completed a lot of infrastructure projects throughout the borough. So, once again, thank you so much.
Hello, this is Mayor Adrian O'Mack from the great Queen City of Greenfield, and we are here today to talk about the transformation that will happen right here at this space upon which I stand. We will be reimagining this space. We will be paving this. We'll be transforming it. This is all in keeping with our green initiative, and so there will be installation of charging stations so that employees and visitors can come here and can charge their electric vehicle. This will be additional space for employees, and this is being made possible as a result of the continuing partnership we have with Union County. And so, I want to say thanks to the County Board of Commissioners. Thanks to Union County for your continued partnership and support, standing with us every day.
Hi, I'm Dan Lee, the Director of Engineering and Land Use for the City of Raway. The City of Raway is extremely grateful to Union County and the Board of Commissioners for our continued partnership in all aspects, including the county's Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant. The funds provided through this grant are essential to ensuring the longevity of the city's roadways that are so critical to our citizens, students, and workforce that travel these roads every day. On behalf of the City of Raway, we thank you for your continued generous support through this grant.
Hi, I'm Mayor Donald Shaw from the beautiful Borough of Roselle, and standing next to me is my Council President Cindy Thomas. And on behalf of the Borough of Roselle Council, we'd like to thank the Union County Board of County Commissioners for always extending their hand in partnership and allowing us to receive this Municipal Aid Grant of $70,000. And I'm going to turn it off to Council President just to tell us a little bit about the benefit of this, this grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is great benefit, well-deserved money. It will benefit our community to protect us and our safety in our parks. Also, with our senior building right behind us, we'll be installing high-tech IT security cameras, which will provide good performance for our police to do what they do best, securing our community. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We share the best, and again, that is to help our community be safe. So, again, thank you, guys, for all the support that you give Roselle over the years. Thank you.
Hello, County of Union. This is Mayor Sigarello in Roselle Park here. Just want to say thank you for the grant to rehabilitate Boy Scout Park in Roselle Park. Very excited. Thank you very much.
Hello, Josh Lizardo, Mayor of Scotch Plains here. I want to thank the Union County Board of Commissioners for their continued assistance here in Scotch Plains. I was just handing over this check, and the bank won't take it as is, but they know the money's on its way. This is $100,000 that will help ensure our roads continue to be in top shape, and I want to thank you for helping us make that happen.
This is Adam Lee, Director of Recreation for the Township of Springfield. We'd like to thank the Union County Board of County Commissioners for awarding the Township of Springfield and the Springfield Community Pool the 2024 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Award. As you can see from the work going on behind me, just less than two months before the pool opens for the summer season, we're using the grant award to do a complete resurfacing of the main pool, which is over 300,000 gallons of water. We're stripping the pool down to the bare walls, making major repairs to the wall and the surface, filling in expansion joints, redoing the tile, the coping, and the landlines before we fill the pool for everybody to enjoy. This is a project years in the making and is so critically important to the infrastructure here at the Springfield Community Pool that was originally built in the 1960s. So, once again, the Township of Springfield, on behalf of Mayor Chris Webber, very happy to accept this award and thank the County of Union.
Hello, I am Summit Mayor Elizabeth Figgan, and I am thrilled to share how Summit, New Jersey, is moving forward with the support of the Union County Board of County Commissioners Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant. This year, we have been awarded a $75,000 grant that will enable significant improvements right here in our community. Our focus will be on enhancing and upgrading ADA accessibility and technology at City Hall. These specific projects will improve access for all citizens, whether it is entering or exiting the building, or improving sound for people who are attending a meeting in the Whitman Community Room. Thanks to the Union County Board of County Commissioners, we can make tangible improvements that will benefit everyone. We are just getting started and look forward to the progress we can make together. Thank you again for this generous and extremely useful grant.
The improvements on Stone Street include new concrete vertical curve, new concrete sidewalks, and new concrete aprons, along with driveway restoration beyond the apron limit where it's necessary. Now, the roadway itself shall be reconstructed from the westerly dead end to its intersection with Emerson Avenue, skipping the portion where it crosses Pine Avenue. A U-road base and three-half-inch section of asphalt shall form the new cross-section of the road. Additionally, a new storm sewer run shall be constructed from the parking lot at Dollar Tree to the corner of Emerson and Stone, then turn down Emerson to connect at the intersection of Stuyvesant and Emerson. This system will be instrumental in mitigating the flooding that has happened in that area. As Stone Street serves as an access to the stores on Stuyvesant Avenue, as well as providing public parking, these improvements will enhance and make more safe traversing the area for vehicles and pedestrians.
On behalf of the Town of Westfield, we'd like to thank the Union County Board of County Commissioners for awarding us a grant of $100,000 towards the renovation of the Memorial Park Playground. The renovation will include the removal and reconstruction of an ADA-inclusive playground for individuals with and without disabilities. The playground project will include court and play surface for wheelchair accessibility, playground structure for children's ages two through 12, and pieces of playground structure for children with and without disabilities to enjoy. The structure will be fenced in all the way around for the safety of our visitors, and we're really looking forward to this project and for our community to enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Joseph Burnham. I'm the Mayor of Winfield Township. Thank you to the Union County Board of County Commissioners for their award of the 2024 Infrastructure Grant in the amount of $15,000. This grant will be used to improve our municipal complex to better serve our residents. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you. That was great. Thank you. Again, our Fiscal Chair Rebecca Williams for all of your work, along with your committee on this, and it was great to see our mayor friends and council friends, town engineers, and, and employees that are making all of our municipalities a better place to live. So, we look forward to all of those improvements. Okay, we will adopt the communications during tonight's regular meeting, and at this time, I will call upon our County Clerk Joanne Rodjapi to present her resolution.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. The County Clerk's office has one resolution tonight for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd now like to call upon our prosecutor, Bill Daniel.
First Assistant.
First Assistant Jim Tansey.
Good evening. We have one item on the agenda for tonight, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Granados.
Thank you very much. Can you say elaborate on the Arrive Together program?
Sure. Arrive Together is a program that we were, the, the Union County was instrumental in, in getting started. We were the first departments in, well, there may have been some down south that, that started, but we were the first, Lyndon and Elizabeth were the first two towns to engage in it. And what it is, is when the police respond to an incident where there may be somebody who has a mental disability, or even a physical disability, or it's a de-escalation tool where the, the officer travels with an actual social worker with him. So, the social worker arrives on the scene with the officer in an attempt to de-escalate any kind of, of situation that may occur at the, at the incident. We've now expanded it. I think we've expanded it to every town in the county. It's a very successful program. We're very proud of the work we did to get it going throughout the, and it's also now being implemented throughout the state. And one of our APs is actually down at the Attorney General's Office, assisting in implementing it statewide. So, it's a very successful program, a very worthwhile and effective program.
Yes, definitely been a great program. I know many people who've taken advantage of it, and also, you know, our county having it covered throughout the whole entire county. I think we're the first county in the state in New Jersey to have every, actually, municipality police department part of it, including our county police department, county sheriffs, and King University, which I think became the first university.
Everybody's, everybody's involved, and, and that's because we were, we were, I think we may have been the first county to start.
We were. We were the first county in state. Yeah. No, it's definitely one mention of that program, because definitely it's something that helps out a lot of people. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Department of Administrative Services Director Laura Scutari.
Good evening. The Department of Administrative Services has one resolution on the agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Department of Economic Development Deputy County Manager Amy Wagner.
Good evening. The Department of Economic Development has one resolution for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I would also like to say a personal acknowledgement to Kathy Adessa, Dave Pelmenstein, and Robert Charkowski for putting together the video that you saw tonight.
Yeah, I think, again, just thank you for, for providing this for our residents in Union County. I think the partnerships amongst the county and our municipalities is strong, and it's the foundation of who we are. So, thank you for all of your work on that. Thank you. Okay, Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities Management Acting Director Joe Polakay.
Good evening. The Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities has four resolutions on the agenda. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Department of Finance Director Beebe Taylor.
Good evening, Chairwoman Palmary Mouded, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. The Department of Finance has 18 resolutions for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. Hi, Director Taylor. Could you, for the benefit of the public, explain numbers 14, 15, 16, and 17, the combining of all the authorizations of bonds for the different VOTEX and county colleges?
Absolutely. Through you, Madam Chair. So, resolutions 14, 15, 16, and 17 are prior authorizations of ordinances that were adopted several years ago, some of which in 2010, all the way to 2021. As a result, we are, when, we don't only bond for matters once we start spending these projects, spending off of these projects. So, this, these various resolutions authorize us to then issue the debt for it. All of the debt has been accounted for in our net debt statements, and number 18 is just a consolidation and prescribing of the bond form.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Department of Parks and Recreation Director Victoria Durbin-Drake.
We're going to go back. Good evening. The Department of Parks and Recreation has three items on the agenda, and I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions you might have.
Seeing, yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Mirabella.
Thank you, Chair. Director, can you just give a few comments on number three in the reservoir? Just what the, a lot of people ask me about when that's going to start and what's the duration. Just a little, a little bit of information would be helpful.
I can tell you that's a project that is, that is intensely being worked on. I don't have an update at this time, but we should have one shortly.
Just, just one question.
Sure. Commissioner Baker.
Director, could you explain that the resolution number one, particularly the location of this Ponderosa parking lot?
Yes, sir. I will. Yes, sir, I would be happy to. The Ponderosa Farm Park is located in Scotch Plains. It is a very popular park. It has long fields, you know, soccer, et cetera. It has one of our spray pads, not a spray park, and a playground, and a lot of walking areas. We don't have enough parking there. This is going to make a big change for the users of the park, and also from a safety point of view.
Okay, so, we, we plan to create some additional parking spaces?
Yes, sir. We will increase our parking by a little over 50%.
Great, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. See, I think last week, or last meeting, they thought I forgot somebody, and I didn't, and today I did. So, I am sorry. Department of Human Services Director Debbie Ann Anderson.
Good evening, Chairwoman, and members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has three resolutions on. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing none, thank you. Thank you. Department of Public Safety Acting Director Dennis Burke.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Good evening, Board. Department of Public Safety has two items on the agenda. Happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Office of the County Council, County Council Bruce Bergen.
Thank you, Chair. County Council has a single resolution tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Office of the County Manager, County Manager Ed Oatman.
Thank you, Chair. I also have one resolution on tonight's agenda. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are three business resolutions from the Board. Do any Commissioners have any questions regarding these resolutions? All laudatory resolutions and resolutions of condolence are from the entire Board. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Commissioner Williams.
I do want to thank the Board for the resolution on the passing of Harold W. Mitchell, former Mayor of the City of Plainfield where I reside, and former councilman. His family is very appreciative of the Board's condolences. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.[1783.41]